Good evening, we're going to call the meeting to order. We're going to start with an invocation. As we gather during the season of joy, reflection, and giving, we thank you for the gift of community and the opportunity to serve the students, family, and staff entrusted to our care. We ask for your guidance tonight as we deliberate and make decisions. May our hearts and minds be filled with wisdom, kindness, and the spirit of collaboration. Help us to remain focused on the well-being and growth of every child we serve. During this season, let us be reminded of the values that unite us: love, generosity, and hope. May our work reflect these virtues and be a source of encouragement to those we serve. Bless this meeting, our community, and all who celebrate this time of year. May the joy and peace of the season be with each of us as we carry out the important work before us. Thank you. At this time, if our Charlboro students could lead us in the pledge. Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
I'd like to invite Emmett White to come up, 4th grade student, to lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
At this time, we will have the swearing-in of newly-elected board members. First, Ms. Sandy Ayers.
I'd like to thank the board for inviting me out to administer the oaths. It's a real honor and privilege, and I really, really appreciate it, as does magistrate Laura. If you can bring your pokes up?
I've got a whole bunch.
Well, come on up. Come on up in the well.
Ray Matusko is doing the swearing-in. He is the Currituck Clerk of Superior Court.
So introduce your family, yourself and your family.
I have my parents, John and Donna Suggs, my husband Chuck, and my daughter Suzie, who will be holding the Bible for me.
Okay, so if you'll get on the right and everybody else get on the left. And who's holding the Bible?
She.
So you'll be the first one to the left. Yeah, so you stand right, yeah, get right, right where the husband is. You'll get where he is.
Suzie, move here.
And then everybody else get on the other side.
There you go.
Yep, and then if you'll kind of face out, if you'll put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, alright. Do you, Sandy Ayers, solemnly swear that you'll support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you'll faithfully discharge your duties as a member of the Currituck County Board of Education so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jason's next.
Congratulations.
Ray Matusko is now going to swear in Mr. Jason Banks.
This is my wife, Melody Banks, by the way.
Alright, there you go. Yep, there you go. Alright, do you, Jason Banks, solemnly swear that you'll support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you'll faithfully discharge your duties as a member of the Currituck County Board of Education so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, sir.
At this time, Mr. Chester Moore, magistrate, will swear in Ms. Emily Krotick.
So William and Andrew, these are my two sons, they'll be holding the Bible, and this is my father-in-law, Bill Krotick.
Stand over here. Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand for me. Do you, Emily Krotick, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and the laws of the state of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties as a member of the Currituck County Board of Education, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Do I have a nomination for chairman of the board?
I nominate Dana Parker.
Do I have a second for the nomination?
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ms. Parker, it's your meeting. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to have a nomination, if there's a nomination for vice chairman.
I nominate Jason Banks for vice chairman.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, congratulations, Mr. Banks. Alright, at this time, we're going to start the meeting, and our meeting's going to begin with our school spotlight with Charlboro Elementary.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Greta Nelson, I'm the principal at Charlboro Elementary School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. We're excited to share our annual Mall Day project for Charlboro 3rd graders, and those of you who had Charlboro students may remember Mall Day. In a moment, Mrs. Evans, an exceptional 3rd grade teacher, will speak to you about their economics unit and provide details on the project. Also today, some of our 4th grade students will share the project that they created last spring during this economics unit. We also have two former Charlboro Elementary students who have grown their Mall Day project into actual businesses, and they're here to share that with you as well. I'm going to give you a bag that has the items that our 4th graders are going to share with you, and then our middle schoolers will provide their own sample. I'm going to invite Ms. Evans up to come and talk about Mall Day.
Good evening. Mall Day is our culminating project for our social studies economics unit that focuses on entrepreneurship. So the students get the opportunity to become entrepreneurs. They come up with an idea for something they're going to sell. They can either do a good or a service. Most of them choose to do a good. They get their idea, they come up with a business name. During class time, they write a business proposal to us explaining what it is they're going to be doing, how they are going to make it, what kind of resources they will be using, the human resources, capital resources, natural resources that they'll use. They will create advertising in class, they do print advertising, which is posters on our hallway. They will write a little script, they can write a little script, and we videotape it and run it on the smartboard during the day. On actual Mall Day, our classrooms become the stores, so the students set up their wares or their business on their desk. They get a little experience with merchandising, they display it, making it look attractive. During the day, people will come in shopping, they work on their speaking skills, where they're selling what they have, they're explaining how they made it, they're trying their best to sell what they have. At some point, we close down a classroom, and those students will go off to the other classrooms, and they become consumers for a little bit and do some shopping. During the day, they will have the opportunity to utilize the concepts they learned about supply and demand. If their item that they are selling is not selling that well, there's too much supply, other people were doing the same thing, they will lower the price. If they have something that's in high demand, they will raise the price during the course of the day, so they get to apply some of those terms, excuse me, that they learned during social studies. At the end of the day, they will count up their money, talk about how much money they made that day. We discuss the fact that all that money would not be theirs in the real world, that all those resources have to be paid for, so some of that would be gone. But at the end of the day, they are very proud of what they were able to do that day, of what they created and the sales that they made, and we've turned what was really kind of a dry topic with a lot of vocab terms into something that was way more meaningful and they could connect to, and it meant something to them, so.
So now I'm going to invite different students to come up and share their project with you. We're going to start with Sophie Nelson. And as they talk, you can probably find their item in your bag.
Hi, my name is Sophie Nelson. For my Mall Day project, I taught myself how to crochet. I created pocket-sized emotional support snakes. These are small snakes you can put in your pocket. When you feel stressed, you can take them out and feel their softness. No one in my family knows how to crochet, so I learned to make a slipknot by watching YouTube. I put the eyes on with hot glue. I am currently learning how to make stuffed animals. I hope you like your snake.
Next, we have Emma Smith, and she's going to present her project and her brother's project, who could not be here today.
Hi, my name is Emma from Mall Day. My store was called Crafty Coasters. My mom and I used epoxy resin and cake molds to create coasters. We used different items such as plastic horses, dried flowers, and crams. I sold them for $5. I sold out and made six more. For my brother, Montgomery's shop was called Montgomery's Rockin' Gems. We tumbled rocks, made necklaces, put some in cups with plaster. The digs came with a mallet so kids could mine for gems.
What I did for Mall Day was tattoos. I thought it was pretty cool because people could wash them off after if they wanted I got it from Amazon for a pretty low price. They could either buy them there, or me put them on there, or take them home. I had big ones, medium-sized ones, and small ones, and I sold them. I sold the big ones for $25, the medium-sized ones for 15, and the small ones for 5.
Next, we have Lucas Gray.
My name is Lucas Gray, and I created necklaces from deer antlers with my granddaddy.
So those were our 4th graders, and those were the projects that they did this past spring. Now we have Laura Milik, I'm going to ask her to come up first, and she's going to present her project that she did with Mall Day years ago.
Good evening. My name is Laura Milik, and I am a 6th grader at Moyack Middle School. When I was in 3rd grade, my Mall Day project was pearler bee keychains in three different sizes. Since Mall Day is in 3rd grade, I have sold my keychains at a few craft fairs, and I have given a few as gifts to my family and friends. I enjoy making the keychains with help of my family. I also enjoy that almost three years later, I'm still making and selling Mall Day projects. I've bought, brought a few of my keychains for you, for the Board of Education members tonight. I hope you enjoy them. Merry Christmas.
He is also a middle schooler who has turned his Mall Day business into a thriving business. He even has a website.
Hey, my name is Landon Brothers. I attended Charlboro Elementary School. During my 3rd grade year, I had Miss Dover as my teacher. In her class, we were assigned a project for Mall Day. I decided to airbrush fishing lures for my project. I enjoyed fishing with my dad, my brother Gavin, and my sister Miley. Since 3rd grade, the lures have been selling pretty good. I enjoy painting and selling them, with lots of orders being shipped out, and my dad helps detail. My sister and brother put the hooks on and prepare them to be mailed off. When the packages are ready to be sent, we take them to a local post office to be shipped to the customers. Since presenting my project, all the Mall Day event, at the Mall Day event, I have been invited to Ducks Unlimited in Elizabeth City and Currituck, Clothes Unlimited, the Currituck Waterfowl Festival. I also attended fishing events in North Carolina and Virginia where I can sell my lures. Sometimes I participate at the art walks, even events in Elizabeth City. All I display is fishing lures. And I display is at River Shore Outfitters in Elizabeth City where the lures can be purchased. We usually send out several packages a week to customers through the United States.
Wow.
Way cool. I'm buying one. Seriously buying one.
Great.
That is awesome.
I think you're going to get some sales tonight, buddy.
Thank you. That's cool.
Look, Jason's intrigued.
Can I get the rest of my Charlboro kids to come back up here? We're going to take a picture.
Nelson. It is significant when a staff member earns a doctorate degree, and we are proud as a board that Greta Nelson has taken this leadership and this example for our community of being a lifelong learner. So she attended the University of Southern California in night classes while also full-time mom, full-time principal, and has earned her doctorate degree. And as a board, we just wanted to make sure we recognize that, and henceforward, any staff member that we have that takes on that type of initiative, we're going to make sure we recognize them in front of the community. So, Dr. Nelson, we would love to get a picture with you.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Lutz. We're excited to share with everyone this evening the 2024 Holiday Card Design Contest winners. First, we'll begin by announcing the winner of each category and sharing their artwork. After, we will take time to invite each student up individually to be recognized and receive their award certificate. We'll also get photos of each student, and then invite the board to come forward for a group picture. Each winner has their artwork designed featured on our CCS holiday cards, which are shared with all of our staff, so that's more than 700 individuals, plus our neighboring districts. We have also included a special bundle of each of those, so all four for you in front of you tonight. Students will also receive an award certificate, a framed copy of their artwork, a few extra copies of their cards to either keep for keepsake or to share with family members if they wish. And finally, the Coastal Times will be featuring each of our winners and their artwork in In the K-2 grade level category, we have Georgia Gray from Charlboro Elementary School. And Georgia is in the 2nd grade. The 3-5 grade level category, Sophie Nelson, also Charlboro Elementary School, grade 4. 6-8 grade level category, Amelia Lewis from Currituck County Middle School. She, Amelia is in grade 6. And last but certainly not least, in the 9-12 grade level category, we have Kylie Ditterman. She's from Currituck County High School, and she is grade 12. And I also just wanted to quickly mention that Kylie was also recognized, I think it was the end of the summer, her artwork was also chosen for the voting stickers that were distributed this year in Currituck County. We certainly want to congratulate our holiday design contest winners, but we also want to thank each of our young talented artists who entered the contest this year. We had so many, and we look forward to sharing all the artwork online over the holidays. We'll create a carousel so that they can all be featured as well. Okay, and so at this time, I would like to first invite, again, the K-2 grade level category, Georgia Gray. If you'd come forward, please. And then Sophie Nelson, also from Charlboro, in the 3-5. Sophie's art included all the elementary mascots, leading Santa in his sleigh. 6-8 grade level category, Amelia Lewis, Currituck County Middle School. And 9-12 Kylie Ditterman from Currituck County High School. And if our winners would just go up to the front, watch your step. Kylie, grab a quick picture. Do you want, can you hold your pictures so they can see? There you go. Perfect. Make sure it goes right side up. Yep, we're good. Okay. Ready? Big smiles. Thank you. And then I'd like to invite the board to come out also. Would you guys want to put this thing? I think we'll be okay, Kylie. You could just scoot down just a little bit more. Alright, ready? One, two, three, say, "Warm, winter, wishes."
Stay right here so your parents can get a picture. So parents, if you want to come forward and grab one while they're all up there, please go ahead. Congratulations. Thank you.
I have changes to the agenda, so I make a motion to remove H4 under consent, to remove item I, and to add a number 7, the change order, under consent.
Is there a second with those changes?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, approval of the agenda. At this time, it is the public comment session. It is a time when individual or a group can address the board about our schools. This is not a time to speak about issues or concerns involving identifiable personnel or students. Matters of this nature should be submitted in writing to the board, and your concerns will be addressed. Individuals or groups will be called in the order in which they signed up, and your time will be limited to three minutes. Josh Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board of Education members, and congratulations to the newly sworn-in members this evening. I am a member of the Currituck County Historical Society, but I do not come to you in an official capacity as the Historical Society member. I come to you just as a citizen interested in historical events. Several months ago, we sent the board a letter about the naming of the school and asked in lieu, or in upcoming, with the upcoming 250th anniversary of the United States being celebrated in 2026, which is the sesquabicentennial. I think I got that right, is the 250th anniversary. So, the school board considered the name of Tulsa Creek Elementary for Currituck's Revolutionary War hero Betsy Doughty. I hope that y'all will continue to discuss that and consider it. But if y'all are not able to consider the name of the school, I had another idea for y'all, that there are several books about Betsy Doughty. One, An Independent Spirit. Two, Betsy Doughty's Ride. And then for younger children, The Ride, The Legend of Betsy Doughty. These are three published books, one is a little bit older, that are available. And I didn't know if these books are available in the school libraries or if the schools for the 250th were planning to do anything school-wide to celebrate. But since Betsy Doughty is our local Revolutionary War hero, I thought it would be appropriate for y'all to possibly look at that while we have some time before the anniversary is right upon us. And for those who don't know, a former history teacher of mine is in the room, so I hope I get this right, Mr. Paul Martin. But Betsy Doughty was a resident of the Currituck Outer Banks, now Corolla. She swam her horse at night across the Currituck Sound Road to Proquemence County, told General Skinner there that the British were coming. General Skinner mustered North Carolina troops. They went up to the Battle of Great Bridge and met the British at the Battle of Great Bridge, which the Patriots won. From Barbara Snowden's research, I believe that there were about 100, I believe she said 108, I don't want to get the number wrong though, Currituck residents who fought at the Battle of Great Bridge. Many of their descendants still live in the county, but Betsy Doughty was a huge contributing factor to that. There is a sign near Currituck Barbecue on the road recognizing her. Historical facts are a little spry, and I see that it's got a yellow light, but there's lots of legend. I think it would be a great unit for y'all to look at, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Josh, what was the name of the second book you said, please?
Believe it was this one, Betsy's Ride. I'm happy to pass these around if y'all would like to take a look at them. Just make sure I get them back, please, they're my kids.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Steve Hedrick?
Evening, board. Steve Hedrick, 296 Summit Farms Trail. Wanted to say welcome. And I know that this year coming is gonna be daunting with your new people on the board. And as citizens of Currituck County, we're supporting you. And my only tasking is make this county better than what it was when you found it. So best of luck on behalf of my wife Connie and I. Do your best. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, the YMCA Executive Director DJ Kapasey is going to give a presentation on the YMCA Before and After School Program. There has been a lot of talk within the county about needing places for our working parents, for our children. And so DJ has agreed to come out tonight and share all that the YMCA has to offer.
I don't know how I can follow, like, all the young entrepreneurs and Josh and Dr. Nelson. I can't follow any of these people. What's that?
What did you bring for us?
I brought cake pops. Renee has them. So, thank you all so much for giving me this platform to talk about the YMCA and how we are really building our future leaders of the county and then also countrywide is ideal for us. So, you know, one thing that when somebody comes up to me and asks me what we do, and it's like, oh, do you provide childcare? Like, well, we are caring for your children. We do that day in and day out at the YMCA. But we are in the youth development business. We are building our next generation of leaders at the YMCA and graciously at all four of our schools. We do that through our program offerings, before and after school care. We offer a Schools Out Camp program at the YMCA and also our Summer Day Camp. For the focus of this, we'll be at our before and after school care programs. Currently, we are in four locations across the county. We offer PM care at Central as well as Griggs. And we offer AM and PM care at our Mayock and Charlboro locations. 6:00 AM until 7:30 AM is AM care. And then from dismissal until 6:00 PM, and that includes any scheduled early release days. There's some questions we get about, what about the emergency ones? And we have a whole timestamp system of when we get notified. You know, if we get notified afternoon of an emergency release, we'll make sure that staff is there because parents need to know that we're gonna be there to care for their children. We just ask that then, parents pick up their children by 4:00 PM. Other than that, it is up until 6 o'clock every day. We are an affordable program. Our price ranges between $63 and $99 per week, depending upon what you choose. $63 a week is AM care only, $79 a week is PM care only, and $99 a week is for before and after care combined for our members. We do have non-member rates available. Surprisingly, 25% of our current participants, which is about 130 kids, take the non-member rate. And then we also have financial assistance available. For 2024, we're happy to report that we have awarded $60,000 in financial assistance to those in need. And one in three children in our program receives some level of financial assistance. So it is a growing need in the county. As costs go up everywhere else, we are serving more people in the financial assistance category. And this is what I'm really proud about, is just what we do with the kids when we actually get them from dismissal. We have a daily schedule that includes snack, free playtime, free exploration. The facilities that we have meet the needs of what we have for our populations that we serve, between playground time, gym use, cafeteria space. We have an engaging curriculum. I'd love to pass this around. Everybody can take a look at what we do with the kids. That's a snapshot. We have a curriculum that's based on a physical fitness curriculum as well as a social-emotional learning curriculum and enrichment curriculum that truly extends the school day. One thing, and I love the mall-day program, I'll have to see that in action too, because one thing that we do with our kids during the early release days is that we bring in guest speakers from the local credit unions and banks to talk about financial literacy as well as wants versus needs. And that goes right in with their learning during the school day. With that, we have a Y Bucks program where all the kids are assigned a specific job during their time with us, whether that is, hey, I am assisting with handing out snacks today. Oh, I am assisting with setting up the craft today. And they can earn Y Bucks to use at our Y store, where they can purchase different little knickknacks and toys from our Y store. And then our last big program is our Character Champions, where YMCA core values, caring, honesty, respect, responsibility, and faith is something that we make sure is in everything that we do during our program. And every month, we award a character champion. We get that out on our social media. We tag the school's social media as well so that everyone can see those. Character is a huge part of what we do. And then with our Schools Out Camp options, we have themed, specific days for Schools Out Camp, holidays. These are available on as well as teacher work days and emergency closing. So if the school does close for emergency weather or anything like that, we do offer a care option at the YMCA. And then, of course, Summer Day Camp is 11 weeks from school closes until school starts up again. So no rest for the, no rest for us, and that's okay. And in the presentation, I included some pictures of our program in action at Mayock and Charlboro, as well as our day camp at the YMCA. One thing that gets brought to us a lot is we need more care in the county, and we are aware of that. And we are working hard with the school leadership, Dr. Lutz, Ms. Doughty, on how we can expand early release days. And I think we'll have some good news pretty soon to come out around that. There's also a need for preschool-age care, and we're just gonna climb this ladder one rung at a time and meet the needs as we see fit. And then we also get requests for care closer to home. I wish I could have a YMCA right next to every school, but I just can't, I don't have that kind of resources. But of course, we also couldn't do this without the support of the Board of Education, without the school leaders, without the principals that are in the building every day helping us and letting us know what's going on. So thank you so much, Currituck County Schools and the principals specifically there onsite. And now I'll take any questions, if there are any.
Mr. Banks, do you want to start? Any questions or comments?
When I'm at the Y, there's always kids there. I mean, it places packed, especially on non-school days. How many kids, just curiosity, do you think you service?
Throughout the year for the, you know, during the school year, it varies depending upon what's going on because a lot of our population is schools, banks, and they usually have off in the holidays as well. 15 to 20 on the high end for the Schools Out Camp. Summer Day Camp, though, anywhere between 100 and 120.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Ayers? Just two things. Is there any cross-comparison to ensure that the students who are receiving financial assistance, they're also receiving the free and reduced lunch information through the school system?
Hmm, there is not, but there might be a way where we can integrate that to make sure that they are, they are at least getting information to be able to apply.
Right, right. Okay.
Yeah.
And so my daughter, who's 19 now, and she went through the program, was that the Y after-school program since probably kindergarten through fifth grade? And it's great. Is there, who would they, if anybody watching or anybody here is interested in getting more information, what avenue would they go to get that?
Yeah, we're extremely accessible. I mean, everybody knows where the Y is in the community park.
They go to the Y and not the school.
The Y. The school has a webpage set up for us on the school website, which has been a huge help with, especially with all the influx of people moving to the county. That's usually the first place to go. But they go to the school website, that'll link right to our childcare website. They can message the Y on Facebook. They can message us directly, stop by the Y, talk to our childcare director. We're, we have a lot of information everywhere.
Before and after care in the schools can be set up in all schools if you have enough enrollment? Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Ideally, we would be able to serve all schools, but it is enrollment-dependent. We do have to look at it as a business.
Sure.
Side of it, we can't have, you know, losses. But we also want to serve the community and the unique needs. And there's funding opportunities all the time to expand to areas. But we start with a survey and see where those needs are. And it is a possibility, as we look to expand, that we expand to more schools.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come out tonight. I would say to parents that are here or that are watching, please take advantage of this program. And then if you want the program at your school, you need to call so they know. I know we did some work trying to get it at Knott's Island before, and we did not get, we didn't get participation. They're not gonna be able to do it for one or two students. If we could get it to 10 or 12, we could probably, you know, seriously talk about that. So I do think this is a great opportunity. We know that working parents and a lot of our parents work in Virginia, so they have to have access for care. So thank you for coming out and giving this presentation tonight.
We're here to serve. Thank you all for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, Ms. Mazel.
Good evening, Chairman Parker, fellow board members, and Dr. Lutz. I have several budget amendments on the agenda for your approval this evening. And I always go in numerical order by fund. It's the OCD thing that we accountants have. So, starting with the state public school fund, this is budget amendment number four. We had an increase here of $26,530. We budgeted for substitute pay for paid parental leave as well as a feminine hygiene grant. And just for clarity on the substitute pay for paid parental leave, that is not an allotment that comes in from DPI. DPI covers whatever costs we incur on that, but we are required to carry budget there, so. Next in your packet should be federal programs. This one's rather lengthy. This is our First Amendment for our federal funds. These grants run on a different fiscal year than our other funds. Typically, the fiscal year runs July to June, but for federal funds, it runs October to September. That's why we're seeing a lot of activity now. I'm not gonna read everything that's there because there's quite a bit of it, but we have three different things happening here. The majority of our grants have carryover, which you see listed there. We also have received some partial allotments for this year's money. We have had reversions in our ESR programs, and these were for programs that were not spent out. The majority of those funds were utilized. We had two ESR allotments that reverted that were specific for summer programs. All in total, when we're talking about the reversion, we're looking at approximately $53,000, which is less than 1% of the roughly 9.3% that we got in ESR funds. So for federal, we increased $634,247.13. Next, we have capital outlay. This is budget amendment number four for capital outlay. We decreased the budget in total by approximately $2.4 million. We added to the budget for payments of state replacement yellow school buses and the capital improvement projects for Knott's Island and Griggs. We decreased the budget for Tulsa Creek after the audit was complete. All of these are booking entries. DPI pays for the yellow buses, and the county pays for the capital improvement projects as well as Tulsa Creek Elementary. And again, it's, even though we don't pay for these, out of our own pockets, we are required to carry them on our books. Next, we have school nutrition. This is the first budget amendment for school nutrition. It nets to zero. We just reallocated some funds from indirect cost to food processing supplies. And then last in your packet is other local funds, budget amendment number four. We had an increase of $19,624.63. We budgeted for Chromebook fees, paid pre-K class fees, a nursing reimbursement, and beginner-to-board certified cohort. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? Do we have a motion to accept the budget amendments?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item of business is the timeline for filling the Crawford Township seat. As you are aware, Janet Rose was elected as a Board of Commissioner, and so we need to make sure that we have a process to fill that seat. So I'm just gonna read what we have. Then we're gonna have a motion and have some discussion to make sure we come up with a plan that the board feels is appropriate. So what we have now is that candidates must reside in the Crawford Township. They must be a registered voter, at least 21 years of age, and they have to agree to a criminal background check. The timeline that has gone on so far is that there was a press release and a vacancy announcement on December 4th. Tonight, we're gonna discuss and kind of put up the timeline. And then we do have a deadline for application submission on January 3rd at 4:00 PM. So do we need any discussion? Some particulars or anything else we'd like to add to this timeline? So I would like to see interviews be done January 6th in the morning, probably, because some of us are attending a school event that evening. And then, Jason, what about maybe after, like the 15th-ish?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Or possible public comment? Public statement and public comment.
Public statement and public comment?
Okay, so part of the process then that we want to make sure we include to whoever applies is that there will be an interview that will be conducted by the board. And then there will be a time for public comment for those people who choose to interview for this, that they'd be able to give a statement, and then also the public would be able to also give any comments. So we can, I'm going to make a motion that we include the January 6th as the interview date. Can we also say a public comment date to be determined? Is that okay? So I actually can't make a motion if someone else would like to do that.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Are you good, Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, at this time, Ms. Ayers wanted to have an opportunity to speak about a community engagement committee and her ideas with that.
So one of the things I ran on during my campaign is community engagement. That includes open communication and conversations between the district, parents, students, the local government, and the community. Community Engagement Committee serves as a vital bridge between our schools and the community they serve. These committees will amplify the voices of parents, teachers, and stakeholders, ensuring that every perspective is heard. I lost my place. Ensuring that every perspective is heard when decisions are made. They foster transparency, they build trust, and they remind us that the challenges we face in education can only be overcome through collaboration. I've been in communication with and researched other districts in North Carolina and Virginia just to see how they engage and foster those conversations. I want to say that I know that we already ask a lot of our teachers and staff, so I pledge that I will support to assist in setting up and launching these efforts. I'm not just delegating. I'm ready to get to work with you. I have a meeting scheduled with Christina Boyer, our Communications and Community Outreach Coordinator, after the first of the year to discuss her ideas and mine on how to best navigate this effort. I'd also like to hear from anyone, anyone who has ideas on this project. So please feel free to email me. I think our contact information goes up on the website tomorrow, next week, but it'll be up soon. So please feel free to reach out to me if you have ideas on how to engage the community. We need transparency, and we're ready to have conversations.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, thank you, Sandy. All right, at this time, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
A second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Just some informational information. The next Board of Education meeting is January 16th, 2025 at 4:00 PM. Also, keep in mind, just, just to be alert to the fact if we do have that special meeting concerning filling the vacancy. That board meeting is scheduled on January 16th for Moyac Middle School. Now for our closing comments. Jason, do you most?
Excuse me. May we discuss where the meeting is being held?
Yeah.
I would like to move it back to the boardroom. I'm not in favor of doing meetings offsite until we can assure that the sound system is perfect and we can livestream those meetings. I don't think that serves the public well when they can't see it live or they go back to watch it and they can't hear anything.
Thank you, Ms. Kradic. Ms. Kradic, we had one meeting this year at Griggs Elementary, and parents couldn't hear. Though we did have some input from community that it was difficult. Do we, do we want to table it, or do we think that we know that it can work by Moyac Middle, or we can't guarantee that?
I'd just say that we can guarantee, we've invested money into the technology. And with, this is a new board in terms of discussion, in term about where you would like to have it. There has been previous, and some of you were on the board, wanted to have meetings across the community. We do face the challenge with the technology component. Ironically, at Griggs, we could hear great and the public could not. When we were at Knott's Island, that was clear, but we couldn't hear. And so Sandy Rollins and her team have, are working to make that, to ensure that it works. We have not had a meeting at Moyac Middle School either to understand if the sound would be great or not. It's, for us, it's, we're, we'll do whatever the board would like to do.
Do you all want to keep it here until we know, until we have a dry run at Moyac Middle?
Doesn't, doesn't matter to me if it works at Moyac Middle or if it don't work. I mean, it doesn't matter. I would, I do like the idea of going to, to the schools, especially over to Knott's Island, because it's, it's a long ways to ask for Knott's Island residents to come here. So it does give them a, gives us an opportunity. So I do like it going to the schools, but it is important, like Ms. Kradic said, that it works.
Right. We, Jason and I actually were part of the board that kind of pushed for that. We have done Knott's Island for years, and then we said we should do South and North. But I agree, if it's, if it's not going to benefit the public and they can't hear it...
Is it possible to test it before the January meeting?
We absolutely will test it, but I cannot promise that it will. I'd like to say, because we're still in the infancy stages of working through it. We have put some money towards it, and I'd like to think that it will work, and that venue acoustically should be okay. And we've held a couple of meetings in there, and the acoustics were decent.
I'm fine with that.
You're okay? All right then, so we are going to be at 6:30 at January 16th. All right, closing comments, Mr. Banks?
I did have the opportunity to go to the, the band concert at the middle school. It was, it was standing room only in, in, in that school. So it's just something to keep in mind. That school's going to increase a little bit. I think about 30, 40 kids, maybe. But it was still at capacity, and I think it was the largest, I guess, sixth-grade band class that they've had out there. So to keep that in mind. And also, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Kradic and Ms. Ayers. Look forward to working with both of y'all, and glad to see you on the board.
Andy? I'm sure. First, I, I want to thank everyone that supported me through the campaign journey. It was a first for me. I was a little bit scared, but I didn't know what to expect, and I was pleasantly surprised by the love and kindness I received. I'm very excited to work with, with Jason and Dana and Dr. Lutes and Emily and whoever, you know, is appointed in January. Second, to piggyback on the community engagement discussion, I want to encourage everyone. Again, when I say everyone, to me, that means parents, teachers, students, the community, everyone, to make their voices heard. We may not always have an immediate answer. We may not have the answer you like. But it is our responsibility to serve and lead and to listen. If you have a question or a concern about anything related to the school district, I would ask that you reach out to the school, you reach out to, to admin, to the district, you can reach out to us. Most of the time, we will be able to give you an answer pretty quickly. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, go to the, to the school's website, go to the Currituck County Schools main website. Our contact info is there. Reach out to us, that's what we're here for. And lastly, I look forward to visiting the schools. I will be reaching out to the principals after the holidays. I certainly will not do it before the holidays, because I, I do look forward to visiting you all and touring your schools. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you, Ms. Parker. I would like to congratulate Mr. Banks and Mrs. Ayers on their Board of Education victory. I look forward to working with this board, and I'm excited to see about the applicants for the vacant seat. I would also like to thank the citizens who entrusted me to this position. I do not take it lightly. I know it will be a lot of work, but I feel that I'm ready, and the rest of these board members are ready to get to work. As we are facing many challenges in this school system, I ask for your patience and your grace. We are a new board, and we need to find our footing so that we can start to work diligently towards a brighter future for Currituck County schools. The journey to this seat for me has been simply indescribable. And quite frankly, I feel my husband should be sitting up here instead of me. But God had other plans, so here I am. With that being said, I am not Will, I am Emily. I still have good ideas, intelligence, integrity, and a common sense approach that I will bring to this board. And rest assured, I am 1,000% committed to his students' first vision. His vision was clear and concise. Students first basically means ensuring that the staff, teachers, and principals have the tools and the support to help students succeed. And that's really the main purpose of the public education system, is to make sure that students succeed. And lastly, I would like to thank everyone for showing up this evening and everyone watching live. I appreciate your support, and I'm excited to be a part of this new beginning for the school system. I'd like to thank my boys for their support. I'd also like to thank my father-in-law, Bill, for making the trek down from Richmond. And Bill, I want you to know that your son was admired and respected and loved by so many in this community.
For sure.
So thank you all again. Merry Christmas, and God bless Currituck County.
All right, Dr. Lutes?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Kradic, congratulations, Ms. Ayers. Mr. Banks, the election is done. Those are all great comments, not that you're looking for them, but I appreciate it. They're from the heart, and I'm looking forward to working with this board and doing, continuing and doing great things for our kids and move this district forward as there are a lot of challenges with the growth, with the second fastest-growing county in the state. Thank you for Currituck Kids for sponsoring supplemental food bags as they go home over Christmas. We appreciate that. The YMCA, we do have a great partnership. DJ mentioned that. He's a pleasure to work with, and it's great to have the Y as a partner. And Merry Christmas, and I wish everyone a wonderful break. Rejuvenate, spend time with family, and we'll come back ready for 2025.
All right. Well, just to echo everyone, thank you to everyone that came out tonight. We have a lot of staff, community members. Mr. Bass is pretending he's here as a, as a citizen, but he's also here as the president of the chamber. I'm going to link you and Mr. Edwards tonight, because I know there's some work to be done there, so I'm going to make that introduction. And just thank you to all of our citizens. I hope that this participation will continue, because an active community that supports and champions public education is a community that can leave a legacy of excellence. I know that each board member is excited to serve and to help continue our path to improvement. As a Board of Education, we have a big responsibility, and part of that is to ask questions. Moving forward, I don't want people to feel uncomfortable when the board meetings may look a little different. I challenge you to accept the idea that different doesn't have to be bad. Our community is different. I imagine that people that were born and raised here see the changes and think that they're unfathomable. The fact is, the Currituck of old is gone. Our challenge as a school system is to preserve all that we can that was great and then adapt and implement to the new things that we now need for this new Currituck. Although we are growing, we are still really a small system in comparison. I like to share that in Chesapeake, the enrollment of Oscar Smith High School in Grassfield is larger than the total number of students that we educate K-12. I say that because I know how special we are. The sense of community and collaboration in Currituck is second to none. When there is a need, our community always answers. As we move forward, we are going to continue to have growing pains. I ask for the community to work with us. Help us build trust. Help us educate our community on the importance of a strong public education system. We are not perfect. We are going to start to acknowledge our problems, and then we're going to work to find our solutions. That is really the only way. One of my favorite quotes that can really be used in all areas of life is that trust is not built in the absence of mistakes. Instead, it is built in the correction and cleanup of the mess. As a system, we're going to dig deep, and we're going to dig out. I look forward to engaging with the community and rebuilding trust with our system and trust with our county commissioners. I look forward to advocating for our staff, who I know work hard each and every day, and for our students who deserve to thrive. I hope all of you have a wonderful holiday season. And at this time, I am going to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is closed. Thank you. Hey, we did it.